is now in session. The Honorable Chairman Shannon Hester presiding. God bless these United States, the great state of Tennessee, in this honorable meeting. At this time, the Reverend Otis Ball will lead us in prayer. Afterwards, please remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
Father, we humbly bow before you this afternoon. And I confess to you that there are times when I don't know what to say or how to pray, but I remember Jesus' disciples said, "Teach us to pray." And He said, "When you pray, pray this way: Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven." Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Father, I pray tonight for this county commission, for everyone present here tonight. And I pray, Father, that you would lead, guide, and direct their every move, everything that they do. I'll read in your word in Proverbs three, verses five and six, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart; lean not into your own understanding; and on all your ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct your path." I know that there's times when those things that come up, that's not easy to deal with. But, Lord, give them the courage to do the things that need to be done. I pray, Father, that you will give them ears to hear what you would speak and how you would direct them in the things that come before them. Give them a heart to receive, and, Lord, a heart that would be obedient to you. Father, I remember, I know that there's times that there's difficulty, decisions to make, but they have to make them anyway, because it's the right thing to do. And, Father, I pray tonight, Lord, as Jesus did when He went to the Garden of Gethsemane, I remember that, how He prayed. And He said, "Lord," when it was difficult for Him, He said, "Father, if it's possible, if it's possible, let this pass for me." But then, He prayed three times that. He knew what was ahead of him. He knew that there was going to be a crown of thorns that would be pressed on his brow. He knew that his back would be beaten to a pulp. He knew that he would die on a low-rudder course for the sins of humanity. So why did He pray thus? We must share the end of that. He said, "Not my will, but thy will be done." And, Father, that's what I pray for this commission tonight, that you will lead, direct them not only tonight, but every time that they meet. I pray, God, that you will give them divine direction. And I know that if you will do that, and, Lord, that at the end result is going to be the right thing, because you never leave us in a wrong direction. Father, I pray tonight for the Kay Christopher family. I pray, Father, that you would minister to them during this time of bereavement, that you would drop your arms around and pull them to your bosom. Let them know that you really meant it when you said, "You can cast all the curbs upon you, because you care for them." Now, Father, I pray your blessings and your favor upon this commission, and all that they do tonight, and all that they will do in the future. I ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our flag. Pledge, ladies and gentlemen.
United States of America, considered and beloved, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated, and please silence your cell phones. Madam Chair, call roll.
Bell.
Present.
Barry.
Here.
Bracken.
Here.
Cunningham.
Here.
Doug.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Ann.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Hester.
Here.
Cooks.
Here.
Kirby.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Fifteen present, all present.
Thank you, ma'am. Take a motion to approve the minutes of the July 10th, 2023 meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All right. Mr. Gaines?
Dr. Brothers, sir.
Mr. Wilson?
Nothing further.
Do a vote. I can do a voice vote on this, or?
Yes, you can.
All right, all those in favor? All those opposed, like sign? All right. Take a motion to accept committee reports and correspondence?
So.
All right, motion by?
Wilson.
Wilson, and second by?
Barry.
Barry. Mr. Wilson?
Nothing further at this time.
Mr. Barry?
Yes, sir. Quickly, on the report number one, the county environmental review board, I think when we read through that, the, I think it's an interesting 10-year plan that we have that that committee is working on and seeing what they want to do. And just in general, again, we've got a chance tonight to add another member in a special report to that committee. Again, that's the hardest work, one of the hardest-working committees that we have in this county, and they keep us out of so much environmental mess that we owe them a great deal.
Today, I received their commentary on the environmental assessment of Craig Airport. It's due this week. I'll be submitting that, and it'll be in the September packet. That will certainly be a point of discussion for this commission.
And I actually spoke to someone who went the other night, and they were really disappointed. They were disappointed in the fact that it was just a walk-around. It really was not less than a public hearing.
Well, FAA was the host, and there was almost nobody there from FAA?
Long way to go on that. But that's a great, and as we continue that committee, we need to thank them. And our long-range planning committee, we have August 4th deadline, I think, on getting a mission statement?
It's actually, we moved it to tomorrow. We have a good working draft, and Mr. Hester wanted the commission, I think, wanted the commission to see it.
Yeah, I would like to see, one, as we were challenged with that mission statement, I, you know, and I felt kind of a spy that was on there. I'd really like to have a one-bullet comment from every commissioner, what do they see Rome County in 10 years? What do you see for Rome County in 10 years? So if you, if you think about that, text it to me, email it to me or something, so that we can take advantage of that and put it in there. But even, everything's modified, I mean, we've changed it, but...
And that's unlimited, right? And we're not looking at just utility, and we're not looking at just...
No, no.
That's what you want to see Rome County being?
When I get back to my office tonight, I'll, I will email the draft, our working draft that we have.
Yeah, because that's going to affect, that's going to affect our whole, our whole mission on that. And then, and then, Rome County lease agreement would might be done, even though that property may be some other, some other places and other things. We're good on that.
Yes, we've recorded it in the registrar's office, so we have a claim.
Good. And, you know, this probably isn't the time with Senator Yeager here, there's some things in here. Are we going to get a chance to discuss some things with you while you're here tonight, Senator?
I would say yes.
And then we will be able to, there's a couple of things in here that, that will... So I'll reserve that to speak with Senator there during that time. Twenty-one was the Canyon Creek Bridge. We know how, what the status on that is?
I don't know what the status is as far as timing on the bridge construction goes. Of course, the road's back open now because utility relocation is complete.
Right, right, good.
That's as far as we know on that.
Good, okay. And then, of course, there's, there are some other things that we can, we'll discuss later with that. But it's always, it's always good to see the Senator here. On number, on number forty-four, by the Budget Director, this, this, this financial report, that just cleaned everything.
That's the county, that is your official, that's from the county court, that's required to submit to commission and to the county executive at the end of the year.
Okay. And then on forty-six, forty-six, is that?
That's the trustees' report.
Okay. So can you just share just quickly on the ending balance, what, I mean, because we're...
What do you mean, what do you want me to comment on?
Well, it just, it just looks like we've, we've, we've got a lot of, a lot of accounts in the net.
Uh...
We've got adjustments received, transfers in?
The top line, buddy, a box copy.
Let me get to the page where you're on.
But resolution eight point three oh five, still at seven million, six hundred thousand was a bump out.
What is it?
Well, I mean, a hundred million. We can, we can... I know all the other reports in here indicate we're strong and physically able to, that's what threw me off on this one, and maybe I'm just really wrong, but that's fine.
Are you good, Mr.?
We can look at it later, Mr. Chair. Thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. All right, acceptance of committee reports and correspondence, all those in favor? Any opposed? Most are passed. All right, do we have any notes?
Yeah, we have eight.
Would you please read them, ma'am?
Austin Atwood, Tatum Ballgreen, Michael Barger, Veronica Choate, Anita Holder, Alan Moore, Lori Rhodey, and Eric Moore.
Motion. Second, anybody?
Second.
All right, Mr. Henderson?
Appreciate it, well missed, sir.
Mr. Gaines?
Nothing further.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign? Most are carried. County attorney's report.
You're going to do hearing delegation?
Yes.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
If you want to go in order, let's do that. All right.
Shake it up, right?
Yeah, thank you. At this time is when we're going to hear from the delegations, our audience, so if you have something to say, please step in the mic, say your name, tell us where you're from, and you get three minutes, please, so...
I'm Alan Lutz with the Rome Alliance, and Stacy Wilson's going to hand out some materials if you pass the ground. Just want to bring up a couple, a couple programs that the Rome Alliance and Chamber deal with, and also give you some information about events. First, what you have, when you get on what you have in front of you, you will, if you pick from the top, the first thing you have is information about the Tennessee Scholars Program. This is the program that you have here. For the last school year, we had 70 students in Rome County who graduated as Tennessee Scholars. The information that was in the newspaper is in here, also showing all the Tennessee Scholars from all five high schools and the virtual academy. So they do see which of the students from your district were Tennessee Scholars. This past year, we gave away, we gave out 11 $500 scholarships to the Tennessee Scholars. That's approximately 15% of the students, and Rome State Community College gave away six $500 scholarships. Next piece of paper you have there talks about leadership Rome County. I just want to highlight that, it's one of the programs that we do in conjunction with Rome State Community College. You have two commissioners who are in the current Rome Leadership Class, and on the backside of that information about the current class, you see a paper here that's purple and gray. There are a third program of Rome Leadership, you have adult leadership, youth leadership, and Engage. Engage is for the community overall, for individuals to learn about Rome County. And that's what this announcement's about, and at 11 o'clock this morning, there are two more seats left open for that program. The next piece of paper you have is upcoming events, and so I just want you to be aware, we advertise part of tourism, upcoming events, that's what you see on this paper. One ongoing event right now is the Tennessee State Fair. Rome County has a boot there promoting Rome County tourism, and so that's information about it. And Stacy Wilson's willing to help put that, we had help with that this week, this past week. So there's a picture of that. We also did and hosted the Rome County National Night Out. There's some pictures and information about that event. And the last that you see in the packet is your invitation to the elected officials picnic, also known as the elected officials barbecue. We want to make sure that you get it on your calendar, and that we get to see you on Tuesday, September 26th, at the Kingston City Pavilion. So that's your invitation for elected officials. Any questions that you have made on any of these subjects or something else?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. And we also handed out these upcoming event schedule and the Rome Leadership Engage to individuals who are here tonight, back here, so they're knowledgeable about the upcoming activities. Thank you.
All right, next?
He's my brother. For 22 years, I've owned my own excavator company, right, here in Rome County. So I'm here to talk to you now about Rome County going private with our septic inspector. I have no problem with the guy that's doing it now, it's just a service that we're given from the state. They don't care, they send him somewhere else. The system's set open for a day or two, which ain't good. And just last week, I had one get five inches of rain in, because he was in Anderson, yeah. That didn't help Rome County other bit. So we need our own inspector. They charge $500 for each permit, $150, I think, for a repair per minute, and you could also put a thing in that you would inspect all the tanks for the city sewer systems and subdivisions that have their own sewer system that have tanks involved. It'd be a way to make it. Thank you.
Mr. Hester, if I may make this one statement, to go with you, an efficient government is better than a big government, and them can make things more efficient for the residents of a county. If we want growth, we want to make things easy.
Make it easy will come here. I agree, yeah.
And so an efficient government is always a better government.
Yeah, when you, when you're waiting on somebody, and they're in control of my business, that ain't good. They in control of my money, so that ain't good. You know, they're holding me from getting this job done to go to this job, and you got to go. Time's money, and money's time.
Sir.
Mr. Chairman?
So the criteria for an inspector is a four-year degree in science, and so many hours in soil science. They don't have to be a soil scientist, because you could tell them, hire them any questions about where the system would go, they can hire their own soil scientist, their private soil scientist, and they're several around to have it purged or sowed out or whatever. And then the burden is on him to say yes or no, where, why not, and all that stuff. Then they do that all the time, too, they refer to a private person all the time. So I think it'd be a real, a damn real beneficial to Rome County, because you just go right over there and get everything took care of. Thank you.
I'm so hoping you'd go only three minutes like this. You want to? Chair recognizes Mr. Barry.
Wait for this year gets any words to be made. Mr. Hester was at the Budget Committee meeting the other night, we talked about, talked about the various fees and things that, that will be there, and I think, I think we've got it till next month on our, on our agenda to take what Mr. Hester suggested and try to give up those spaces of pain, pain for an individual.
Sir, all right. Anyone else who want to address the commission? All right, hearing none, saying none, we'll go ahead and move to the county attorney's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a very short report. You have in your packet all the court orders from the recent term of court. Next term of court is in October, don't have anything pending in between then. If you look at correspondence number 25, you will see that the pumper truck case has been removed to federal court. That is because we sued an Allo State defendant, HME from Michigan, for more than $75,000, and when we do that, they have the right to move the case from state court to federal court. So when it comes time to go to court, we'll be going in Knoxville instead of Rome County, and there's nothing we can do about it. And that is my report. Does anybody have any questions or anything?
What is the amount of the lawsuit?
It's a little over $200,000, that's what we paid for the truck.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. County Executive Report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a special guest joining us tonight, Senator Ken Yeager is with us. Senator Yeager, who was first elected to represent the 12th District in the Senate in 2006, currently serves as the chairman of the Republican Caucus. He also serves on the Senate Financial Ways and Means Committee, the Commerce and Labor Committee, the Fiscal Review Committee, and the State and Local Government Committee. And just in case you may not be aware, Senator Yeager served as the Rome County Attorney from 1978 to 1982, and of course, was as a Rome County Executive from 1982 to 2006. He has joined us tonight to share a few words, so please help me welcome our Senator, Ken Yeager.
It's like being home again. The way he pointed out, I got my start here, and if I've had any success as a center, it's because of my experience in local government. So thank you for letting me come by tonight. I wanted to come by and bring you up to a date briefly on a couple of things, and then, except for Barry, if you've got any questions. What I thought I'd do is I would tell you a little bit briefly again about the session that just ended in April of this year, and then the, the expected session on August the 21st, a special session that the governor's called, and perhaps we'll make a comment about the one in January. And then, of course, I want you to take your question, anyway, I can help you, I will, but it was the budget that we passed out in, in April of this year for fiscal '24 was a very significant budget. It was good in many ways, for example, to the education, some of the most significant expenditures that we have had for education on the secondary level, as well as higher education, among other things. But I'm particularly pleased with the fact that we were able to help Rome County in this budget. Specifically, in this budget, we were able to secure a million dollars for Rome State's Community College. There's not a person in this room that's not aware of the Rome State Exposition Center, excuse me, the Henry Stafford Exposition Center. Since that building was completed, it has, the seating has never been finished. They have waited for 43 years to bring their seating to full capacity, and I'm pleased that this year's budget, we were able to do that with the appropriation of a million dollars. It will bring the appropriation, excuse me, the seating from 500 to 2,000 capacity, and that will really help the marketability. It will help the marketability there of the exposition center, and will, as you know, it will really impact the Rome County economy. They tell me that this will mean a million additional dollars into the local economy here by doing this. So I'm really pleased to hear about that. That was the main priority, we were able to get that done this year. And of course, we completed, actually, last year, the, the middle school scholarships. Maybe you're aware of the middle college, excuse me, middle college scholarships, where high school seniors, and we have many high school seniors, juniors and seniors in the Rome County school system that participate in this program. And they, in years past, they had to pay for that out of their own pocket, but we were able to secure a full funding for the tuition for all of our Rome County students who would want to get into that program, into middle college, whereby they are completing two years of college at the same time they're in high school. So I was really pleased with those two accomplishments that we were able to do. We, we are facing a special session that was called by Governor Lee shortly after we concluded our work in April to, to address matters that were of concern to him. We finally received the call this week, and we've been called into session again on the 21st of this month, where we are considering, in his call, there are 14 bills, six of which are administration bills, the ballots are bills of members who the governor included in his call. Most of the bills call for changes in, in the public safety and mental health. There is one bill on the agenda, the so-called E. Erco Law, the Extreme Protection Act, I think I've got it right, or the, what they might call the Red Flag Bill. As far as I know, that bill has no sponsor, and it was said that, and I can candidly tell you that I have no intention to support the bill too. There are some worthwhile bills on mental health and public service that I hope we will look at this session, but I've just gotten the call a few days ago, and I'm still digesting the bills, but I'm happy to try to answer any questions after I look a little bit closer at those bills. One bill I'm particularly interested in is that we will extend tent care to mental, to mental health. You know, currently, many mental health procedures are not covered by tent care, and this bill that, that the governor submitted will expand tent care to include mental health, which I'm so very glad to hear, because that's a serious problem in our state. Another bill that we passed, and then I'll move, I won't rewind, excuse me, back to the session we just finished, we passed a major tax decrease bill in this state, which primarily reduced significantly the franchise and excise taxes on corporations, but it also decreased the business tax for small businesses, for example, in Rome County. The current exemption from business taxes is $10,000 for a small business. We've increased that exemption to $50,000 to make it easier for small businesses, to ease the tax burden, and I'm pleased to tell you on my motion, the bill also includes, it will hold counties harmless or any reduction in that tax. The state will make that up to the counties from the general funds, so there should be no problem on the budget this year. Lossless reference, but I'm pleased about that. Back to the special session, I've said about all I want to say, it's, I have no idea how long it will last. We report Monday the 21st at 4:00 into the Senate, and we'll see what happens. The, we will have, I think, the education, excuse me, the health, the welfare, the judiciary committees, among others, will, and the finance committee will, will hear these bills, and we'll see what happens. There's still a lot of unanswered questions, and it's hard for me to give you a clear direction, and we're still working our way through that. But I have no idea how long we'll be there, I hope it's not long, but we'll see what happens. And then, of course, in the coming year, it's so hard to predict. I do, I know, I can tell you one proposal that I'm working on for the budget, perhaps the governor will include in the budget, is we're including, we're working on with the city of Kingston and the county government, a major appropriation to extend water and sewer from Kingston to south of the river. You know, the big roadblock, if you please, was the crossing the bridge there at the river, and we met, I had the mayor and the county executive there, we met a few months ago, and we've resolved that impasse with the Department of Transportation, and, and I'm asking the governor candidly to put that money in his budget, it'll be a cost of about a million dollars just to cross that bridge. But the gain on that by providing water and sewer to the area south of the river will be, will pay back over and over again, so I'm really pleased with that. And I'm cautiously optimistic that we can get that done, but you might hear more about that later. So those are a few of the things that we're doing, and that is a real thumbnail description, because I'm mindful of your time, you've got other work to do tonight. But I'd be happy to take a question or two, is that all right, Mr. Chairman, if I do that?
Yes, sir.
Are anybody having questions? Time's up. Do you want me to address it, Mr. Chairman?
First of all, thank you.
Commissioner Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for all of your service and all you've meant for Rome County. Secondly, thank you for making sure that, and as a county executive, you had plenty of experience in getting unfunded mandates from the state. Thank you for making sure that we are still not receiving unfunded mandates, because a lot of that goes through the Chairman of the Local Government Committees, but we do have sort of an unfunded mandate with our health department. We're having to move our health department, Michael Dunn Center, because of some mold and other issues.
Yes, sir.
And we're having to pick that cost up of that move, and the state is not offering us even the ability to use some of our rent money. As well as, we're paying our workers' comp and liability insurance for the employees who are our employees. I guess there's always been that rift of state employees and county employees at the health department, and we're okay with that, but we're into that paying the workers' comp and liability portion of that as well. So if you would look into that, that would be helpful. Also.
If I can get, would it be presumptuous for me to ask Wade to maybe send me an email on that issue? And I might add, we have received some significant grants to assess with that. Assessing a million dollars, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
But we can't use any of that.
Oh, really? Got it. I'll check into that. I'll be in Nashville Monday, and if I hear from you guys, I'll look into it.
And another area that you've been, that you've been more than helpful and precious to us is broadband, and that continues to be, that continues to be one of our obviously biggest concerns in the county, so if you continue to look at it or something, I think we've got about eight-hundred-and-eighteen million dollars now. I don't know, so if we can do that, that would be good too.
This year's budget, I might include a fund for grant applications, competitive grants, I would imagine Rome County. And I think we had Mr. Cresswell up in the office earlier in the year, where we discussed this issue with the very people that will be making those decisions, so I'm cautiously optimistic that.
No receipts, sir.
And then, of course, any other things, and I think we've gotten a letter stating the fact that that's a state candidate, they've gone every location cost of utilities on aisle seven, and I think they did issue some letters saying that the state has given the utilities, the max that they can, that they can give us. That's another.
That's the Rome Utilities. I have been in touch with, well, I'd say within the last two weeks, the Regional Director of the T-Dot about that again, and he is, of course, he has just told me what you did, that they have, they are, they do have under statute some money available to assist the local government, which isn't near enough, but he's also indicated to me that they are looking for some other funding. I don't want to get false, but we are looking for funding to help them.
And then the only other thing would be our silver card, excuse me, tonight, and hopefully something coming down the aisle from our silver card. More importantly, thank you for what you've done, for your service for us, Rome County. We might get a new portrait of you on the wall, but it looks like, I didn't recognize it. Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much for what you do in Nashville for Rome County.
Wade, do you have anything else?
Yes, sir. I'll go fast, I promise. Today, some of this has been mentioned, but you need some clarification on some details. So today, Rome County Health Department began moving the Michael Dunn Center, old Michael Dunn Center facility. Services will be provided at the new site on Thursday, August 17th. They'll start providing service on Thursday. The resolution on your desk that Connie handed out that requires waiving the 12-day rule will enable us, will enable demolition to happen on both sides of that building. Senator Jaeger failed to mention, but he and Representative Fritz helped procure 1.7 million dollars that will enable us to renovate our health department to something completely state-of-the-art and right size. But that money can only be used in that part of the building. You can't demo just half the building and have the other half unfinished. That's what that, we'll talk more about that, but I wanted you to know that they're moving today, and they start on Thursday at the health department. Also, you received an invitation today from me to a stakeholders meeting for the Long Range Planning Committee. This is the very first stage of the effort for the Long Range Planning Committee to develop a countywide comprehensive plan, so please check your inboxes and RSVP with Lindsey Stevens. This is about, happens at the very first stage, to get your input on what needs to be in our countywide comprehensive plan.
What day is that?
Twenty-second. It's quick. It's next Tuesday.
Okay.
There's three different meetings. Well, that's the Steering Committee meeting. Yeah, you're on that. So your meeting's at four o'clock. Rest of the commission is invited at eleven or one or two. I can't remember which one that was. There's different stakeholders meetings throughout the day. Steering Committee will meet at four o'clock that day, and then I think three of them are Rome committees, so we gotta be out of there by 5:15. Appreciate that. For the ARC Committee meeting, ARC Committee, if you don't know ARC, but listen up. This afternoon, I received an analysis from NACO on the interim final rule for ARCA flexibility, and I just had a chance to scan it, not in deep read it, but at a glance, it appears the timelines did not change, but the uses for the funds have expanded. So instead of giving us flexibility on timing, they've given us flexibility on what we can use it for. Well, what we can use it for is never our issue. There are plenty of things we can use it for that qualify, but the timing did not change. That's way out of glance. So I'll be looking into that further, but for ARCA Committee, please know that we will need to address that. Two weeks ago, the Building and Codes Office opened an online portal and began accepting debt credit and debit card payments for the first time, and in only two weeks, the vast majority of our transactions are now digital rather than manual. Also, our capabilities are much greater. For example, anyone who has applied for a building permit can go online to see their status. Anyone that can see the results of their building inspections online, that portal is available at our website, which is RomeCountyTN.gov. Two more quick things. The Galhar Road ambulance station remains on track. This week, you'll see a slab poured for the garage and some field dirt coming in there to help prepare for the driveway, and then, let's see, I have two quick things. The Tennessee Broadband Accelerate Program finishes its work this week. They are preparing a presentation for you that we will probably present in a workshop format. I've got a list of things, I haven't even talked to Chairman about this yet. I've got a list of about four different things that we need to workshop about, and one of those is a legislative session with Representative Fritz and Senator Jaeger, a few things that we need to talk to them about, but we also need time for that broadband presentation to be given to you, and this is not the right format for that. And then finally, construction began last week on a new spade and uterine clinic building adjacent to the animal shelter. So Mr. Chairman, I know this is a long report, but there's a lot going on, and I need you to know about all of it. So that concludes my report. Glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for the county attorney? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on. Or I mean, county executive, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I called it, so you slapped his elbow. Yes, sir.
Mr. Cresswell, could you, towards the health department, do they have a goal for when they're going to be back?
I have a goal for when they want them to be back, and that's June 30th, 2024. I do, we have, we can, we can exercise an auction on that property up to December 31st, 2024, and that is not my goal. My goal is to have us back in there by June 30th. Our engineer does not think that that's possible, and I'm ensuring him that that is possible if we'll just find a way. So we're doing everything we can to get to that date.
All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on to the special orders, and this is confirmation of reappointment of Mary Ann Folsowitz and Susan Witz to the Rome County Environmental Review Board.
Motion, Doug.
Second. Second, who?
Gan.
Gan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Doug.
He served several terms. Susan, this will be her second term. They're doing good work on the Environmental Review Board. Appreciate their service.
Mr. Gan?
Doug, both, sir.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries. Confirmation appointment for Don Coffey to the Rome County Environmental Review Board for a new term of July 30th, 2026.
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Doug. Mr. Barry?
Only that, that he's, he's very qualified. You saw his resume. He did serve, he served on the plateau partnership force for a number of years, and is very, 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 very qualified, and is interested in serving on this.
Mr. Doug?
Fifty years' experience in nuclear waste, involved in Rockwood community as well as Rome County. He'll make a good addition to that board.
Any discussion?
Yeah, he came and met with us at our last committee meeting. He's willing to serve. As Wade's already said, this committee, Mr. Doug and I sat on it. Believe it or not, I really don't speak a lot because that, it's way over my head, but the things that they are doing, serve Rome County, it's like a lot of the other volunteers and the folks that we have, the healthy county, they provide such a great service for us, and they do the things that would take up a lot of our time. And so for Mr. Coffey to want to be a part of this, it's going to be a big, big, big thing. They were down to just a couple, three members, and it's a real challenge for them to be able to really have a clear definition of everything that's going, so it's going to be great having him on the team.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, next is approval of a surety bond for Jennifer Johnson as a youth service officer in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Henderson, second by.
Hook.
Mr. Henderson.
Nothing further.
Mr. Hook.
Something to say.
Any discussion? Because it has money, Madam Clerk, can you call the road?
Oh.
Aye.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Hook?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Fifteen yes.
All right. Approval of surety bond for Lenora Doyle Spangler as a youth services officer, amount of twenty, two thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion.
Motion by Henderson.
Second, Wilson.
Second by Wilson. Mr. Henderson.
Further, we got Doug.
Mr. Wilson.
Welcome back.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Bell?
Aye.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Hook?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Fifteen yes.
All right, thank you. Hey, so right now, this is the first time when we changed our time and started our zoning meeting with our commission meeting, so this is a resolution for zoning, resolution zero.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
We're quick on special orders. I just like to thank the road department for their service here in all these storms and everything. We had a couple of trees down covering our road, couldn't get in and out, and they were there early in the morning and stayed, all those were done, so we got a lot of dedicated people in emergency services and all these other road department guys did an extremely good job in all these storms that we got. I just want to thank them.
Thank you. All right, zoning resolution zero eight twenty-three zero one zero, resolution of the Rome County Planning Commission, recommended action by the Rome County Legislative Commission as a resolution amending the Rome County zoning map as requested by Valerie Rivas to rezone map portion zero eight eighteen.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Henderson, second by Ferguson, for Henderson.
Give the floor up.
Mr. Coe?
I have a question for the county attorney.
Apparently, you can make a public hearing as part of this motion, but yeah, you need to have a public hearing before you vote.
Okay. This piece of property is on, over in here, it used to be an old mobile home park. These folks want to bring it back to A2, like the whole area is out there, and it comes to you with a unanimous recommendation to rezone.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else want to?
Mr. Chairman, so you can call a public hearing right now as a part of this motion. In fact, we have to do that before we can vote, is that correct?
Yes. All right, then consider yourself called to a public hearing on resolution zero eight twenty-three oh one zero.
Then by television.
All right, anyone want to speak to this zoning resolution? And as I said, it's the first time we've combined the two together, so we probably need to remember that. All right, anyone else in the audience would like to speak to it? All right, hearing none, seeing none, who had the motion on?
I did.
You, or anything else?
Nothing further.
Who had second, Mr. Ferguson?
I'll have anything.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the road?
Bell?
Yeah.
All right.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Hook?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Fifteen yes.
All right, thank you, ma'am. At this time, before we go into our seven original new business, I will at this time take a vote on the waiving the 12-day rule for our final resolution to nine, and if the motion to waive, to approve up to one hundred thousand dollars from the Archives and Records Management deserve for the engineering and other preliminary calls for renovating the southern side of the health department.
Hook, move.
Second.
Second.
Second by Gan. Mr. Hook?
Nothing further.
Mr. Gan?
Nothing further.
All right, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, Chairman, nothing.
Why the 12-day rule?
Usually, well, most of the 12-day rules we've brought to you so far, I've felt like we could have planned a little better and not had to do that. Not in this case. This is actually one where it developed inside the 12-day timeframe, and I needed to bring you all, bring this to your attention, ask you permission so that we could proceed. If we don't structure our workflow in such a way that we're doing things at the same time, like demo and design at the same time, we'll never meet our timeframes, we'll never meet our deadlines. I'm shooting for June 30th in hopes that we get out of there by December 31st. So what this does is appropriate some money out of the archive fund so that we can use it to plan and then work towards the demo on the other side of the building, and not the health department side. So then we do demo at the same time, because it only makes sense to do it at the same time, and that way we're doing things at the same time so that we are saving time.
All right, any other discussion on waiving the 12-day rule? All right, Madam Clerk, this is only on waiving the 12-day rule, Madam Clerk.
Bell?
Aye.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Hook?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Fifteen yes.
All right, thank you. Please don't let me close the meeting now without skipping over number eight, please. All right, resolution zero eight twenty-three oh one, a resolution authorizing the Rome County Executive to enter into an interlocal cooperation agreement with the City of Aller Springs.
Motion, Doug.
Second, Wilson.
Mr. Doug?
This will be one-fourth of the position within the zoning. Appreciate Aller Springs joining.
Mr. Wilson?
I'll refer to the county executive if you had anything to add.
Well, this is the, this was the final piece, that now we've adding, added a planning function, the Rome County Government and the Building and Codes Office, City of Harriman, City of Kingston, and now the Town of Aller Springs have entered into an agreement with us for us to provide planning services for them as well. In turn, as you see in this interlocal agreement, they provide a contribution back to the county to pay for that extra assistant planner position. So having all, this completes that whole plan. The cities are ecstatic that we've been able to pull this off together, and Glenn and his team have already been working hard. In fact, I think he's got his first planning commissions for the cities coming up next week.
That's it.
All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, Mr. Brackett.
So you said, we're missing Rockwood and Harriman. Did I hear that right?
Just Rockwood.
Just Rockwood, and they've been, I didn't notify?
Yeah, absolutely. They've got a, a building. They, they're, um, they've got a, a building codes inspector, uh, Harold Ishman, who's been there a long time. And they have a good working relationship with the East N C Development District. For now, they're going to keep things the way they are. Uh, if something happens down the road, the door is open for them to certainly join this effort and be welcomed.
So that is something that can come later.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Hearing none, seeing none, because it does have fourteen thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars associated with it, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Bell?
I'm, I'm confused. Are, are Wade giving them this money?
No.
Okay, so it's just, gotcha. My goodness.
Aye.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Hook?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Fifteen yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Really, uh, resolution zero, uh, eight twenty-three oh two, a resolution to restate the position of the Rome County Commission in the advocacy of the state and federal effort to prevent the migration of invasive carp.
Okay.
Mr. Murray?
Second.
And?
Henderson.
Brackett.
Right.
Sorry, guys, I, it's the first time going manual in a while, so.
Yeah, I thought.
No, that's fine. Mr. Murray?
This, this is just a, this is just a continuation. We, we had a, uh, we had a resolution on record, and, and, uh, this resolution just, just changes a few things in it. Uh, we just, we just always, we've got to be really mindful of, of, of what, of what's around us, because, uh, Rome County would be effectively probably more than any county, uh, in our area, in our region, if, uh, if, if this, if this happens. If the silver car gets, gets to watch more in Rome County, uh, our tourism is dead, uh, our property values are dead, uh, and, and, uh, we just, we just got to do, and this is one thing that we can do, so that's, that's basically the reason for this. I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brackett?
I guess just as taxpayers, commissioners, and everybody, it's, it's probably not if, it's when, and this is trying to combat something down the line of the board. It's kind of too late once it's in your back, you know, in your yard or in your backyard, so we're trying to do something, and, and it's, and if it hits, it's devastating.
Sure.
The economy, so we need to stay on.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll take a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, resolution zero eight twenty-three oh three, a resolution to adopt the Rome County Government Employee Handbook.
Motion.
Goss?
I'll go second, Charlotte.
Charlotte?
I'll make second.
All right, then, uh, Mr. Cunningham.
They've worked really hard on this, and Jennifer's put a lot of time and effort, and we've had a couple of meetings, and everybody's on board.
That's exactly what Commissioner says there, uh, they have worked hard. I, I've kind of, we're getting a little bit on the, on the, on the county's work on it, I think some of the department has worked. Everybody's worked on it, and it's, it's made this handbook, you know, it, it won't be perfect, no, but it's, it has been revised on the level it was, and I think it's been fantastic.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion on adopting an employee handbook?
Mr. Murray? I would, I would, just, you, you have anything to add? I mean, just, just, just been behind it a lot, and has done a lot of work on it. It's married to H R, I guess.
Yeah, um, I'm just glad we're all able to come together and, uh, probably successful learning.
What are the changes?
Well, radio. So, hey, the, the one that was replaced was from two thousand six. Um, uh, trustee, Mr. Mason called me last week and said, hey, what's the, what are all the key differences? And I, I just started talking for about two or three minutes, just listing the differences. There were so many things that you need to include now that didn't even really exist in, in two thousand six. So, um, it would, it would take a while to find out.
And, and I think, I think, uh, Mr. Attorney, we, we've worked on this how many years, and we were never able to get one that, that most county officials would buy into, right? So this, this is really a, a first for us, for, for having this, this handbook to cover everybody.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we'll take a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Resolution replacing surplus, a certain Rome County vehicle and equipment is listed on the attached sheet.
Henderson? Gan, second.
All right, Mr. Henderson.
What vehicle is it?
It's a Dodge Charger, uh, on one of them.
Dodge Charger?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Gan.
Don't even get rid of them.
All right, any other discussion? Because it is going to go deals with several of those money, Madam Clerk.
Bell?
Aye.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Yes. Henderson? Esther?
Yes.
Hook?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Fifteen yes.
All right, resolution eight twenty-three oh five, a resolution to appropriate eleven thousand dollars in the records preservation, uh, function of the general fund. Wilson, motion.
Hook, second.
Mr. Wilson.
This is something that's been for the budget committee. This is, uh, not that it's going to save room, but it's a piece of equipment that needs to be done to, yeah, preserve the files that we have. Microfiche, something you don't hear a lot of anymore.
All right, Mr. Hook's.
Nothing further.
Any other discussion on?
Walter Brackett. If, if it's not going to help us, why are we really, well, tell me the need for it, if it's not going to help us.
Uh, this was in last year's budget, it just never got caught.
Yeah.
And then when we went through this, I think when we took the budget process, I'm not sure we realized that it had been bought. Then we found out it had been bought, uh, so we're trying to fold it back into the budget. It's to replace a broken piece of equipment, so they're using it to scan. You can, microfilm is really one of the only legal ways you can scan any state record, or any, or any record that's, uh, governed by the state and what you can and can't do with records. Uh, when you try to digitize record, what you can and can't do with it is still very limited, you can still do anything with microfilm. So they're using it, and the one they've got in the house broken, so it's just replacing.
Been broke along the house.
Uh, it's not, yeah, yeah, see, the county attorney uses our records as much as anybody that's ruined, and you're saying.
Um, I can give you a real world example. Um, a lot of times in boundary line suits, I have to get copies of old tax maps. They're only on microfilm. We don't have any way of printing those maps off because the microfiche is, is broken. So I'm hoping this will help.
Okay, so it would be, I, I'm just saying, I didn't want to dust collect or sit around and spend money on something we're not going to use, but we're going to use it yet, okay?
I think Commissioner Gan, Commissioner Wilson was talking about how our records storage issue, it won't really help us alleviate the tax base.
But it does help.
Yeah, some have questions on that. It, it's going to be, uh, something we need to go for legislation to get rid of some of the old records that we're storing for a hundred years that really don't need to be done that way. That's what's taking a while, right?
And when I mentioned the workshop with you all with legislate, with our legislators, that was one of the issues.
Yeah. Nothing further.
There's a lot, there's a lot of records, um, that are required to be public, and it's difficult because we have to keep them for a long time. You know, if someone comes in and wants to see them, you know, they have to see them. So it is difficult, but we have to keep records for a long time.
Goss?
Mr. Chairman. Now you said, now this is dental public records, should this not come, come for public records, you mean, first before, if it's wrong to the public?
I think it, I think it probably did last year, oh, because it was in last year's budget, and that probably predated us, potentially.
Can't really appropriate anything with that matter.
All right, any other discussion, any other questions? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Bell?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Henderson? Esther?
Yes.
Hook?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Fifteen yes.
All right, motion passed. Uh, resolution zero eight twenty-three zero six, a resolution to appropriate forty-four thousand five hundred eight-two in Health Department function of the general fund.
Hook's move.
Hook's? I got a second. Murray? Mr. Hook?
I'm yield for a county that's.
All right, before that, Mr. Murray.
I'll, I'll, I'll listen to what you say.
County executive.
Yeah, this went through, uh, Budget Committee last week. This is, uh, in response to, uh, the county's five percent raise. Uh, so it comes out to a, a net to the county, uh, difference of three thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars, right? So it's money in, money out, and there's a gap there of a little over three thousand dollars. State, state funds most of that.
All right, any other discussion?
That's the one, Mr. Chairman, where we're talking about the workshop and the liability, so.
Sure. And, and for help.
Right. That's also where I seen the bottom line, we had to save a million forty-four thousand six hundred fifty-six dollars in the fund. Yeah, all right, any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Bell?
Aye.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Doug?